We're at 162021 at 11:00 a.m. The purpose of this meeting is to discuss Bill Number 38, which is dealing with the Hazelwood ball fields legislation. It'll be much more, but that will afford a general title. Madam Clerk, will you call the role, please?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Days.
Here.
Councilmember Clancy.
Here.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Here. Madam Chair, Councilwoman Webb is texting me. She's having trouble getting in. I'm trying to fix that for her, just so you know she is trying.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Tracus.
Present.
Councilmember Harder.
Present.
Madam Chair, you have a call.
Thank you very much. The committee takes official notice of and admits into evidence all St. Louis County ordinances and resolutions. Councilwoman Clancy, do you have a statement?
I believe I heard Councilmember Tracus call for a point of order first. Councilwoman Days?
Yeah, it's not necessarily a point of order. Councilwoman Tracus, I will recognize you.
Thank you. I want the record to reflect that I object to the holding of this hearing and your presiding over it because I do not believe you are legally the chair and therefore not authorized to convene such a meeting or to preside over. So I want the record to reflect that objection.
Thank you. Please let the record show the same. Councilwoman Clancy, do you have a statement?
Yes, I continue to object, Councilmember Days, and I need the record to reflect that.
Thank you so much. We are here to discuss a very important issue, I believe, that will be happening in the Hazelwood, Florissant areas of North County. And I would like for Councilman Harder, at this particular point, I believe it's his legislation. So would you go ahead and make the introduction? I believe we do have Mr. Buck on. I'm trying to see. Yeah, there he is. Okay. Councilman Harder?
Thank you, Chairwoman. Basically, Bill Number 38 is a renewal of the set aside money of $6 million out of the convention in visitors' payroll tax. And we've done this two times already for 1919, I mean, 2019 and 2020. And due to the pandemic and other circumstances, they weren't able to close on this in 2020. And so we have to renew this set aside for 2021 so that the Powerplex project can go forward and close on time in 2021. That's the essence of this bill. And I'd like to turn it over to Matt Zimmerman with the City of Hazelwood to explain how we got to this point.
Matt?
I am here. Thank you, Madam Chairman. Thank you, members of the county council. We appreciate you giving us this opportunity to come and present this request to you today. In the interest of time, I won't go through all the details. I believe you're all very familiar with the details. You've already perfected the bill. But the reason why the city is making this request is, again, more for the record than anything, excuse me, I'm sorry, more for the record than anything is that this money was designated by the county while it goes through the CVC pursuant to state law. This money was designated by the county to go towards this very important economic development project, not just for Hazelwood, but for all of North County. We believe that this will be a successful project. More to the point, we hired our consultants, oh my goodness, their name went right out of my head, PGAV, PGAV, sorry, to do an independent study because we didn't want to invest our many, many millions of dollars, more money than even the county's putting into this project, unless we felt like we could independently verify that this was a project that was going to be financially viable. They came back on their own independence. The city paid for this report by itself. And, excuse me, I'm sorry, the city paid for the report itself, and it came back that this would be a financially viable project. And we believe that's still to be the case. We believe that the impact of COVID, the impact of, and everything that's happening in our country is also having an effect within the development markets, within the lending markets, if you will. We also believe that Big Sports Properties has demonstrated not only commitment to this project, but that they've been continuing to help operate the mall. And we are working with them and the TDD bondholders for them to continue to operate the mall so that we have something going on there. We need to keep Cabela's going. We believe that if that mall fully closes, then Cabela's is going to leave. And there's a very good chance that they'll actually leave all of St. Louis County and go somewhere else, whether it's out in St. Charles County or to the Illinois side, I don't know. And they, of course, won't talk to us, but we believe it's highly likely that they will leave this location. And this is critical to maintaining that site and the tax dollars that comes to the city as a result of this. And the example that I'll use is a friend of mine, operator, is the manager of a ball club for, I believe, six and seven-year-olds. So I went down there, not last week, but the week before at 5:00 or 5:30 on a Tuesday night. And for all the practices of baseball and softball, all the practices of volleyball, that building had a lot of students in there. They were all socially distanced, of course, but there were hundreds of people in there. And maybe more to the point, the parking lot had well over 100 cars. I walked the parking lot as well. And there were well over 100 cars with parents, and parents with kids sitting in there, waiting for their child to be done. That tells me that there's a demand for a facility like this in St. Louis, in the region. It also shows that Big Sports Property is continuing to bring people in here, even though there are, even though we have COVID, even though the project has not yet been fully funded, they can make this site work. And so we believe that this is a very reasonable request. All we are asking the county to do is recommit into calendar year '21 that they will take the county's money. This is not the CVC's money. This is the county's money from the county hotel tax and continue to commit this. We know that state law requires it to go through a review by the CVC. We feel confident the CVC will continue to support this. And then my last point is that, and I've said this to all of the county council members before, but I will reiterate it again, the city is the lead on this project in terms of the governmental agencies. We are not going to ask for this money from the county until all of the money is ready to go, until there's a new development agreement with us, with a new development agreement with Bridgeton, a development agreement with the TDD bondholders, till all of those agreements are in place and all that money is lined up, the county's money is not going to go in there. And I'm not only making that pledge to you as the city manager of the City of Hazelwood, but I'm telling you that the city isn't going to be putting its money up until all of those things occur. And I'm hoping that that gives you a comfort level, as well as the reputation that I believe Hazelwood has worked so hard to earn, that this money is not going to be put at risk, that this money is only going to go into a viable project, this money is only going to go into a project that has all of the pieces in place. I have behalf to answer any questions you have. Also, Mark Spikerman from Gilmore Bell, who is the city's bond counsel, is on this call as well, in case you have any questions for him. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. At this point, we will hold our questions until we have seen the entire presentation, and then we will move forward with the questions and answers. So with that, Dan, are you ready to proceed?
Great. Well, thank you, Chairman. And before I jump into the update and into the project, I really want to take time to thank Matt Zimmerman and Mayor Robinson, the entire Hazelwood council too, because they're supporting their commitment to Powerplex. I assure you that without that dedication and staying the course on this project, we would not be at the finish line as we are without that support. So I just want to make that point clear. I'm sure all of you can imagine.
Dan, you're breaking in and out. I'm not sure if your connection is good, but it's kind of going in and out there.
Okay, is that any better? I moved the mic a little closer.
Much better. Thank you.
Okay. As I'm sure all of you can imagine, the impact of COVID-19 has been pretty devastating, not just on our project, but on the youth sports industry in general. You know, we were scheduled to close on March 26th, and all the financing was in place. And we got a call on March 23rd that due to the collapse of the U.S. bond market, that our bond buyer, Nuveen, had to hit the pause button. And they kept that pause button on for about two and a half months. In early July, mid-July, they came back, said they were prepared now to go to the closing table. But during that time, unfortunately, the fact that we were one of the few counties in the state of Missouri that was not allowing youth sports to go on, one of our banks bailed on us. That left us another significant capital gap. We spent almost five months seeking new funders, new banks. But again, with our industry still shut down from any tournament play, it's pretty hard to get people to be willing to give you a $25 million loan to a business that still was not yet open. So the shutdown did not just also impact our ability for lending on the capital stack, but it also impacted, you know, appraisals. It impacts business growth. It impacts our ability to attract businesses to the project. So until people see that this sector of hospitality and it is the fastest-growing sector of the American tourism market of youth sports, until we see it fully opened in St. Louis County, I just don't think we're going to be able to get this thing to closing right away. So what we can do and what we continue to do is to engage and keep committed all of our public-private partners. In addition to the city and the county and the CVC support, we also have some significant and substantial grants from Amarin, from Heartland Coca-Cola, from the St. Louis Cardinals. We've got sponsors and tenants who have all stayed the course. Not one of them have left us and so believe in this project and know what a great impact it will have on North St. Louis County. So we continue to cultivate those relationships. I also know Councilmen, Councilmembers Days, Harder, Fitch, Dunaway have all taken some time out of their schedules to come out to the Powerplex to see the courts that are already up. We have 11 volleyball courts currently active. We have a baseball, softball training space that is full every night, training young athletes. So it was good for them, I think, to see how you can convert many of these big box stores into really incredible sports assets for our community. But I just want everybody, you know, on the council to understand the full scope of Phase One, of what will be finished. Obviously, the Phase One includes the four city ballfields and the stadium, which is where all of the CVC funds are dedicated. However, we'll also be pouring in about $55 million in acquisition, construction, resolving past due tax and bond issues that have plagued this campus for many years. We'll be creating 26 hard courts for volleyball and basketball. We'll have beach volleyball courts. We also will have 10 pickleball courts. We'll have a new dance cheerleading studio. We'll have an esports cafe. We'll have 13 new restaurants. We have a great theater operator who's going to reopen the theater. We'll have a new inflatable ninja course. We'll have the go-kart tracks and a new operator there. We also are putting in a new solar grid over the parking lot between the stadium and the ballpark, put in by Amarin, which will help us light our lights, our concession stands, our scoreboards, everything in the outdoor space will be powered by renewable energy. In addition, we will wait for, as we wait for sports to reopen, it's important to know that, you know, we've had to try to stay viable, as Matt pointed out. We are still operating and trying to protect the asset of this mall from going into blight and deterioration. So we're doing everything we can. We have pivoted our entire business model to try to meet the health department standards. We created a drive-in concert and a movie venue. We also plan to graduate more than 4,000 seniors this year in a very safe drive-in graduation environment, just as we did last year. We're working with many different school districts to create really a remarkable commencement experience in a safe outdoor environment. Also, upon final completion of Phase One and Phase Two, you're going to see the largest indoor dome in North America, which will be located on the west side of the campus over by the theater. There'll be new hotels on the campus, plus a new sea store. We'll have a new competitive dance cheerleading arena as part of Phase Two. Plus, we'll have a new outdoor adventure center. They'll have zip lines. We're going to utilize the mile and a half of canals that surround the property for kayaking. In all of the campus, we'll generate an estimated $88 million in retail sales. That's upon final completion of the project by 2024. We'll also be opening up some recreational areas for pickleball, for cornhole, other recreational games, even with the limited capacity that we currently have. We can still create a fun environment for parents and families to come out and enjoy themselves while still meeting the health standards during this COVID epidemic. Our banks really need to see that despite the industry being completely thwarted in St. Louis County, that we still can find ways to generate revenue and, you know, meet those health department guidelines while still keeping the campus viable. I also know Matt touched on it briefly, but the key to keeping this project a reality and creating the hundreds of new jobs and building a really remarkable tourism center in North St. Louis County is that we've got to keep everybody engaged and supportive. If we lose just one or two funders in this project, I feel it would really be devastating and limit our ability to get this to completion. So with that, we want to thank everybody for their support in extending this funding from the 2020 budget to the 2021 budget. And Matt and I, as he said, are happy to answer any questions you might have. Also, in addition to Mark Spikerman from Gilmore Bell, we also have Ernesto Segura, who represents us. If you have any questions or technical questions as it relates to the development agreement or the structure of this public-private partnership, they'll be happy to jump into the conversation.
Thank you very much. Either of the other two guests, would you like to make a comment at this point? Mark or Ernesto, I believe?
Yeah, this is Ernesto. I don't need to make a comment at this point, Councilwoman, but as Dan said, I'm representing Big Sports Properties and happy to answer any legal or technical questions that may arise.
Okay, Dan, did you have, I know earlier we had mentioned sharing the screen with some, something. Is there something that you wanted to do? You don't have to, but is there something that you wanted to do?
I'm happy if people would like to see some of the renderings or the drawings. I'm happy to do so. I think that I've got a, Chris will have to give me permission, I believe, to share my screen. I think I could do that now. I see a share button has appeared.
You already have it. I already moved it over to you.
Oh, you did? Great. Okay.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Fitch?
Madam Chair, just briefly, I've got to step away shortly. I will try to come back. I just want you to think I lost connection. I do have to step away in about 10 minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just for clarity, can everyone see the screens?
Yes.
Okay. This is just a presentation that I have shared with any of the council members who have taken time out to come out and tour the property. So for Councilmen Days and Harder and Fitch and, I believe, Dunaway saw this last summer as well. This is just the deck that will kind of, you know, give you a quick synopsis. The industry itself, I think, is what you all have to understand. This is the fastest-growing sector of the American tourism market. Nothing else is even close. This is growing at an annual 20% annual clip. It plowed through 2008 when the economy tanked. The growth continued year after year in '09 and '10 and has continued to do so. And really, what you really need to understand is what other communities around the country are doing. We're seeing huge investments. In most cases, most of the projects you see on the screen there are publicly funded, with the exception of ESPN's Wide World of Sports, that is Disney World. But Grand Park, that was $115 million bond issuance by a town of 28,000 people. They're going to pay those bonds off nine years early. Grand Park is one of our, I guess you'd call our biggest competitors. They are an outstanding youth sports complex with 31 soccer fields, 26 baseball fields, three indoor soccer fields, 12 volleyball courts. Since that has opened about six years ago, the town of Westfield has seen six new hotels, 13 new restaurants. And again, their tax income is going to retire those bonds early. As you look through just other ones, Louisville Flurgham was a public-private partnership up in Peoria. You can see that the dollar figures too here, that most of these municipal and public-private partnerships are much larger. We're very fortunate here at the Mills that we can renovate, and our cost per square foot is much lower, which makes the entire project much more financially sound. We don't have to take out enormous public bonds or private bonds for that matter. We do have some old debt that has to be retired, but we will have so many more assets for a much lower price than any of those on your screen, probably with the exception of Wide World of Sports on Disney's campus. There is a common thread between the top three sports parks, as well as Pigeon Forge and ESPN. Those parks were funded in part by hospitality and tourism funding. Why is that? Because all of these theme parks, Sports Force, the land was donated by Cedar Point, the largest roller coaster park in the country. Why? Because they recognized that more and more families were going to ballparks and courts instead of to theme parks. So what they did was they brought the theme parks a mile and a half away from their facility, and they've seen a huge enrollment upticks to their parks since these parks were built. Same with ESPN. Why would Disney invest $300 million plus in a sports complex? Because they recognized that more and more families were traveling and spending their summer vacation time and money in tourism. So just kind of walking through some of our assets, this is a good slide that shows you the scope, the size and scope of our campus. You also can see its close proximity to the Bridgeton ballfields, which we plan to utilize when Bridgeton has fields to offer us. We also will be hopefully partnering with other neighboring communities on additional turf fields. And again, to touch on something Matt said, is that this is not just an economic stimulus for Hazelwood. What you'll see is huge trickle-out economies that go with these youth sports complexes. For example, Westfield only has six hotels. On an average weekend, they're filling close to about 8,000 to 10,000 hotel rooms a night. They go as far into downtown Indianapolis, 40 miles away. They fill all the hotels in Carmel. They fill all the hotels in and around the region for a typical weekend at Grand Park. We'll be doing the same. We'll be filling hotels from St. Anne to Bridgeton to Maryland Heights, filling hotels from Westport to the airport. So understand the economies of this are not just benefiting the city of Hazelwood, but are really making a tremendous impact on the entire North County region. These are just some of the architectural renderings that I'll share here. This is the Amarin Stadium, fully designed, fully engineered, ready-to-go vertical. Amarin is the title sponsor, but they're not just putting their name on a building, as I said. They're putting in a solar grid parking lot that will be located between the stadium and the fourplex ballfields that the county will be supporting. So we'll be one of the most energy-efficient outdoor sports complexes in the country with 100% solar energy funding the lights and concession stands. Bradley Beal is one of our partners in the project, is really going to help us tremendously in building our brand for volleyball and basketball. Basketball, his club is a huge Nike influencer. They are some of the top teams in the country. They have like 23 players right now in Division One basketball. So having Bradley as a partner in the project and being able to help us fill these basketball courts on a week-to-week basis with premier basketball teams, we also will be the largest indoor permanent volleyball complex in the country. No other volleyball venue promotes 22 volleyball courts year-round. Pickleball, Pickle Beach is one of those, these are two of the fastest-growing competitive and recreational sports in the country, pickleball and beach volleyball. Since the Olympic Games in Rio, beach volleyball has now grown almost threefold in the United States. More northern states are getting into it, and colleges are now offering beach volleyball scholarship opportunities across the country. Anheuser-Busch is a big partner in that space as well. They'll be sponsoring both a Beer Garden and a Mick Ultra Bar. Those are some of the renderings that have been drafted and drawn, and we have all those ready to go into construction as well. They're fully designed and engineered. Obviously, we'll have fitness centers, we'll have restaurants, we'll have a wide range of different activities. We are working as well with the City of Florissant, the potential of supporting Coke Park and renovating Coke Park, which is only about seven minutes away from our campus, for creating additional turf fields in the future as well. BJC is a wonderful medical partner of ours. They will be putting in not only sports medicine offices, but also a youth sports performance center. They're very excited about being able to do preventative medicine to help athletes avoid injuries. So B&amp;B Theaters is a theater group that we've been working with, and they're excited to purchase and renovate. They'll be putting over $10 million of renovations in the former Regal Theater. They will be going from an 18-theater centerplex down to probably a 12 or 14-theater screens because they plan to put in some bowling alleys and a large arcade and a karaoke bar and restaurant as well. So this is the overall campus. The stars you see are letters of intent we have from hoteliers and restaurants and purchasers of this land to continue to finish the project and finish the land development. There's a Culvers on there, plus four hotels, and then we have a large commercial partner over there on the Bridgeton side as well. These are just some of the renderings of the hotels that will be coming on the property. Wyndham Garden and Cambria will also be a part of that mix. Here's our design and construction partners, all local. Just so you know, we really want to put a lot of St. Louisans to work. We know the economy is struggling, and we are not going outside of the St. Louis region for any of our major products or construction services. Local architects, local engineers, local construction company. And Horizon is located on Dorson Road. They're one of the largest manufacturers of domes in the country, and we're excited to work with them. Their manufacturing plant is over in Granite City, Illinois. But for us, this is all about local, local, local. So in just kind of wrapping up, I mean, this is our mission statement, just to kind of let you know what we're all about. We want to build, you know, an exceptional campus for sports and wellness and hospitality experiences. We also are forming a nonprofit called Play Partners that will be focused on giving access to club sports and to a lot of sports that low-income and especially African-American young athletes don't have access to. It's a shame that, you know, Major League Baseball, for example, has seen African-Americans at the Major League level go from 20% of the players down to about 7.5%. And we're going to work with the Cardinals and Major League Baseball to change that and get more players access to this game. It's so driven by club sports now, softball and basketball and baseball and many of these sports. If you're not in a club, it's very hard to get recognized and get good and to get skilled. And we plan to put a big focus during our weekday training on giving access to players that right now do not have the same kind of access to skills training and development that other higher-income families do. So one of our real missions here will be to make sports accessible to all kids.
I'd like to just jump in for one moment. As Dan's given this impressive overview of this ambitious project, I do think it's worth underlining that the counties set aside of these funds will be restricted. So as Matt said, the city will be the steward of working with the county. There's a separate agreement between the city and the county that governs the deployment of these funds once we are prepared to close. And I think it's worth noting, too, that from there, they will be restricted to being used to help develop the public ballfields that would be housing Hazelwood. housing, uh, Hazelwood's community, um, baseball leagues. Uh, they will have that public use. So, um, you know, there, there's a lot here and it's, it's obviously an ambitious project, but I just wanna underscore that, that these funds will be restricted to, uh, purely public pursuant to, I think that's worth noting.
Right. And the, and the city is not looking to change any of those previous agreements. Obviously they need to be re-adapted, but we are not looking to change any of that.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dan. Was that the end of your presentation? I think you dropped off. Okay.
Yes, it is. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
And thank you, uh, at this particular point, we will have discussion and questions from our council members. Anyone?
I have a few questions, Councilwoman Days.
Councilwoman Clancy, you recognized?
Yes, um, I have quite a few questions, but I'll, uh, well, let's, let's see how this goes and then I can, I can pass it over to someone else. Um, so you mentioned that this is a financially viable project. Um, I would like to know more specifically what evidence you have to be able to make that kind of statement. You didn't really go into that that much and I, I want specifics.
Would that be Dan or would that be Matt?
That, that would be.
Question of, um, Councilwoman Clancy?
Yes.
Who are you asking the question to?
Whoever is able to answer it.
Yeah, that, that obviously is us. Um, we're happy to share. I'm hearing it from, I don't know if anybody else. Um, but yeah, we are more than happy to share with you the, um, business performa and getting into the details, but, uh, we're very different that than many organizations, uh, that are privately or, or should say are publicly funded because they're one hundred percent dependent on sports income, which is very hard to make a business performer out of. Uh, we are fortunate to have a Cabela's and to have furniture stores and to have a church and to have uh, theaters and restaurants and hoteliers who are all paying uh, part of the, the rent as well as the can to help support the sports operations. Um, it also, I mean, it is an industry that has a lot of, um, of visitors, a lot of, uh, opportunities from team fees, club fees, uh, hotel fees, different things that can make it sustainable and viable. Again, without, um, diving into the full performa, which is a uh, extensive report. I, I don't know if, if now is the time. I will just tell you that no bank's gonna fund a project that is not financially viable and they spend months underwriting the, um, you know, underwriting the performas, the income streams, they, they challenge every single one of them and uh, we have, um, you know, got the project, uh, fully funded and, and I think Matt can also address what were the findings of the or as well.
Yes, uh, thank you, Councilwoman Clancy. Um, we did hire PGA V. They are very well known in St. Louis. They do many, many projects. They do projects around the world that specialize in large family type events. They've worked for, uh, uh, Busch Gardens, for, for, uh, Walt Disney World, some of, some of those big projects. Um, and what we did was we had them come in and say, based on the square footage that was allotted for each type of use, restaurants, um, um, athletic fields, what kind of revenue is gonna come in? How many hotel rooms are designated? And then, and then we sort of put a, a, a factor that, that reduced the value of that based on what Big Sports Property was, was projecting. And it still came back and said, even with twenty five percent reduction, that it should cover the annual debt service, um, associated with this, as well as generate, um, um, net revenue, uh, taxes to the city to pay back its share of the debt that it's going to be issuing associated with this project. I, I, does that answer the question you're looking for?
Yeah, I mean, I, I understand, I guess I'm hearing some hesitation to get into the full pro forma, but, um, you know, this is six million dollars. This is a and I think it's important for public transparency reasons that you, um, you know, help, this is an opportunity for you to also help make the case to the public. And I've heard some concerns about the amount of money this is and I've heard concerns about financial viability and also um, how that fits into a project in North County and what the needs and desires of community members are there. So I just, you know, um, I'd be happy to see the details, but again, as specific as you can be right now for the public, especially in the questions I'm asking would be appreciated. Um, how many jobs are estimated to be created by this project?
I'm in part-time jobs. Um, with that, I think, uh, it's important to note too, these are not all hospitality, food service jobs.
Dan, you were muted when you said the number, so you may wanna back up and restate the number.
You bet. So we will have over six hundred, um, jobs created on the campus and that is, um, does not include the retention of the hundred and thirty jobs currently at, at Cabela's. So the campus will employ nearly seven hundred and fifty people, um, at completion. And these aren't, yes, many of those are part-time, umpiring, officiating, um, you know, concession worker jobs, but it's also a lot of full-time professional jobs in sports retail, sports marketing, um, hospitality, uh, hotel management, um, theater and, and recreational management jobs. So, um, you know, a phenomenal, uh, driver of new jobs and revenue, but I think it's also important to know what the total economic impact is over and above the um, campus generation. Obviously, we know we can do eighty eight million dollars of retail sales and retail, um, activity on the campus. But the overall economic impact, they will spend a lot of money at Cardinal games, at the theaters, at and going to Forest Park and going to Six Flags. Our sports families don't stay on the campus the entire time. Many of them come in a day or two early. They stay a day or two late. They make a whole experience out of it. Um, again, an independent third-party evaluation says that it'll have almost a three hundred million dollar uh, impact. That's very consistent with what, uh, they're seeing on a, on a year-to-year basis at Grand Park uh, over in, in, uh, Westfield, Indiana. I think last year they had an economic impact of two hundred and sixty million dollars. Um, and that was in nineteen, pre-COVID, obviously. They had some early shutdowns in the year, but I think this year they're still on par to do over two hundred and twenty million dollars of of economic spending by the tourism that it creates. And uh, you know, I also, I, I'm very sensitive to the making sure that tax dollars are put to where they're needed and um, I will say this, that if you can find another project, um, that meets the needs and the, and the requirements of the hotel tax, which is is restricted tax, meaning it can only be spent on tourism and sports facilities uh, that can generate tourism. If you have something else that can do the same kind of work with the same dollar, or if you wanna continue to to only fund the convention center with those funds, that's fine, but I'm saying in St. Louis County, especially in North St. Louis County, the economic impact of this kind of a campus is a perfect use of a hotel tax that is restricted to tourism and sports facilities uh, in our region. And as a resident of St. Louis County, um, it's, it's sad as a, as a coach of twenty one years that I consistently have to go to Indiana and Tennessee and Kansas and, and, uh, Kansas City and, and Chicago to try to find great sports venues. Uh, we owe it as a great sports community to make St. Louis a hub and a haven. We serve certain sports very well. Hockey and soccer are extremely well-served. Um, indicative of the sixteen million dollars that this council approved to build soccer fields down in Maryland Heights, a hundred percent of that project funded by public funding and it's paid dividends. It, it fills hotels, it fills restaurants. Uh, we're only asking for ten percent of our total project to be funded by the, by the council and by the CDC funds. Uh, the rest of it is being brought to bear by the city and by, uh, private investment groups and private bonds that will make this project a reality. So we think it's very, um, a very strong use of a tourism tax that is designed to support our county hotels. We will be filling over two hundred thousand hotel rooms a year in St. Louis County. And I think that alone will pay back this county in three to four years, which is how we should really look at how we spend, um, taxes is, does it have a dividend and does it come back to us in spades? And I think we can answer that question with a resounding yes.
What is at this site now, Dan?
I'm sorry?
What is at this site now?
It's called the Mills Mall. Um, it's ninety-two percent vacant.
Okay, cuz I'm also, you know, when I think about projects up in North County and I will defer to my colleague, uh, Councilwoman Webb on this, but I'm also thinking about Jamestown Mall and there's an incredible need up there. Now, I haven't heard of anything that's shovel-ready for that development, but when I think about, you know, the needs in North County, um, I know that that's also a high priority need and potentially there could be a project that develops that could also make good use of the same funds that you're asking. I wanna go back to something that you said about, um, banks funding this project. You did say that, um, uh, banks would not be funding something that wasn't financially viable, but I wanna clarify something else I heard you say that you're not gonna get your final bank funding. I'm not sure if I'm using the right terminology there unless the county, it the bank's closing on this is contingent on the county providing the six million dollars. Is that correct?
Uh, it's contingent on all the partnership funds. Yes, it is.
Okay. Um, and was that always the case or was this your plan B when everyone bailed last summer?
No, it, I mean, it's, uh, been a public-private partnership from day one. I mean, uh, ballfields don't make money. I'll just tell you that. I'm gonna be hundred percent honest to you. That's why they're all publicly funded by park districts and and city districts around the country is because the fields themselves do not generate anywhere near enough, uh, income. They're only open eight months a year, number one, because they're outdoors. Um, but what they do drive is tourism. Turf fields are in very, very high demand and tourism dollars spent within the community is what makes the investment in the ballfields worthwhile. But it's very difficult to have banks fund a ballfield because they look for direct dividends and in, in the event of a private-owned ballfield, they wanna know would there ever be a buyer for them? Uh, sh- in the event that the, the fields would not, would fail. Uh, banks are not going to fund that because there's no, um, buyer, if you will. Uh, because most venues in the country, including our ballfields, are gonna be funded by public uh, funds and it's, it's required or necessary. I mean, um, I will just tell you that you're never gonna get enough lease time, rent time, tournament income time to justify the amount of, of money. Volleyball, very different, right? Uh, to build a volleyball court, you only are in fifty, sixty thousand dollars to create a volleyball space that can fill eight teams at a time. Uh, you can make a strong business model around volleyball, beach volleyball, pickleball, other types of sports like that. Turf fields are just so expensive and, and to make them happen in St. Louis County, we need a public-private partnership to make it happen.
And I have one final question on.
I'm sorry, could I, Councilwoman Clancy, could I, could I add to his response to?
Sure, go ahead.
That, that the, that, that the, the deal, if you will, or the agreement going back all the way to twenty nineteen always was that this was gonna be some sort of a, a joint partnership, now as you said, public-private, that had all of this funding lined up. Obviously, if, if one piece of that puzzle falls apart, it's much harder to, to sort of find a new piece to fit in there when all of the agreements have, have been set, set aside. So our agreement has always been, um, um, that, that, um, this funding is all gonna come together and then none of it is going to actually be asked for or, or allocated to the project till all of the pieces are in place and that the city is going to make sure that that happens.
Got it. Um, final question for now, and then I might circle back depending on what my colleagues ask. Um, you touched on the issue of an inclusion and in making sure that this facility is accessible. Um, you know, cuz when I, uh, this is a very, um, this is a very visionary project you have. I was very impressed, but I also thought about, are we just um, doubling down and exacerbating some equal, some equal inequality in this region because, um, we are, you know, providing something with, that will be accessible to folks with resources. And you know, I saw a lot of dollar signs, not only in what you're asking for the council for, but also in terms of people being able to access this. Youth sports are expensive. Um, uh, you know, and even, even myself, growing up pretty solidly, middle-class, didn't have access to many of these, of these things to be able to participate or travel outside of the region, um, for these kinds of things. So I just, you know, I would like to hear you know, either today or some other time, more specifics, like show me the receipts about how you are going to make good on your commitment to inclusion. You know, I heard some generalities about the Cardinals helping out. Give me some, I wanna know specifically what that looks like because it's very important to me that when we use these public funds, it is going to help close some gaps in terms of access for the most vulnerable kids in our region to have access to these facilities, just like their counterparts that are, that are more well-off. And it's the right, those, those are my questions for now.
Okay. I would just say it's a very high priority to us as well. I mean, our entire ownership grew from day one. Um, and, and one of the main reasons the Cardinals are a partner in this as well. They recognize the the social and economic disparities that are occurring within youth sports and uh, this is gonna be, you know, geographically, what a great location, being right in the heart and easy access off three seventy for Hazelwood School District, Pattonville School District, Ferg floor School District, all being able to get into this space in a very quick and easy manner and, and we plan to work with them, especially Sunday night through Thursday night. We have those five nights a week where we don't have tournaments going on uh, in tourism that we really can focus on community assets and providing scholarships to our existing clubs. We will have over five hundred clubs that will call this place home during the week. And one of our, our priorities and, and already are working with some of our bigger clubs that are practicing here already. They're very excited about providing scholarship opportunities uh, for low income and not just scholarships. It's one thing, I mean, one of the big barriers is that the, the college ranks are becoming the new minor leagues of, of baseball. And if you can't make the academic rigors of college, you also will not have opportunities at the sport at a very high level. Um, so we're also gonna be doing academic, um, tutoring and, and having a lot of our athletes who work here mentoring and being big brothers to younger athletes and giving them an opportunity to really be leaders and, and teach these kids not only how to play ball, but also um, helping them with academic support and, and giving them the opportunity. So lots of those synergies between the communities and breaking down racial walls. Sports is one of the the greatest melting pots, uh, I believe. I think it's where common ground is always, is found with, with kids and and I will tell you as a coach of twenty one years, um, uh, I love the fact that, that, that kids of all races and all groups and all economic backgrounds can come together in a space and a place and be equals. Um, and it really does create a, a phenomenal opportunity, parents as well, because parents become part of that ecosystem as well. So we're excited about all of the great opportunities that this Hazelwood location gives us in that outreach and, and making sure that that accessibility happens.
Councilwoman Clancy, is that your final question?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Councilwoman Trakers, do you have questions?
Oh, I have many.
Let's go.
Thank you. Mr. Buck, I'll direct my questions to you to start with.
Hey.
Um, I have it correct, your first attempt at, uh, this project was going to take place in Chesterfield in two thousand nineteen, is that right?
That is correct.
Yeah. And at that time, you couldn't go forward because you lost the financing.
I'm sorry, a- actually, to, to predate it, the original project in Chesterfield was in twenty fifteen. They've been working with us since twenty seventeen here in Hazelwood.
So, let's go back to two thousand nineteen and Mr. Zimmerman, if you don't mind, I'd like Mr. Buck to answer the question I asked him. I have questions for you. I will ask in a moment. Mr. Buck, with respect to two thousand nineteen, the reason that your project didn't go forward at that time was because you didn't have the financing. Is that correct?
Yeah, it was actually much earlier than that. It was two thousand seventeen when we were, uh, in Chesterfield. Um, we have had a long battle and fight with the bondholders here at this location. It was never a matter of of our funding. It was reaching a settlement that everyone could uh, make financially feasible. There's thirty seven million dollars of tax debt on this property. I shouldn't say tax debt, it's bond debt. It is a privately held, uh, bond debt going all the way back to the original infrastructure of this facility in two thousand and three that has remained to be, uh, unpaid. So we've been diligently working with, uh, those bondholders, all, all private. Uh, these are not public bonds, but you're talking Bank of America, BlackRock, um, you know, Oppenheimer, several other large investors who hold those bonds. So uh, it has taken almost two, two and a half years to reach a settlement. Um, we were prepared to try to get to a closing in two thousand and, uh, nineteen. Um, but there were some, uh, title issues with the current ownership that kind of, uh, uh, could not be worked out with the current ownership group. Um, they, they refused to pay a lot of the back taxes and different things. So uh, it was not really until spring of twenty twenty that we finally had a clear path to closing, which was on March twenty sixth, when all funding was in place. And three days before that closing, the bond market in the U.S. economy collapsed and no buying was going. buying was going on. So Nuveen stopped all buying, as did every other bond buying group, uh, as it was trading at zero at the time.
Back to my question, in 2019, you were not able to put the financing together?
Yes, that we, we've, we've been working. It's a, it's a very complicated project. It has 11 major funding sources. And yes, there, there has been a lot of starts and stops, uh, to answer your question.
And in 2020, your financing fell through again. Is that correct?
Sir, a lot of people's financing fell apart. There was a thing called COVID-19 that occurred and, and, uh, the entire U.S. economy came to a screeching halt. Um, I'm not going to, you know, I don't know where you're going with your line of questioning, but, uh, you know, if, if, if there is a, uh, cleaner pathway forward, I'm, I'm open to your suggestions.
2020, your financing fell through again. Is that correct?
Yeah, that is tru- true, Mr. Tracus.
Um, yeah. Who ho- who holds this private debt, sir, currently?
Uh, it's my major- I'll answer that. I'll answer that one. So th- there were, there was a transportation development district that was put in place, um, over the Hazelwood and bridged in portions of this property as part of the original mall development. They issued a series of bonds that were sold, um, to private bondholders. Those bonds were secured by sales tax revenues from the mall as well as a springing special assessment on the mall. Um, as the mall deteriorated, um, the sales taxes dwindled, special assessments increased, and the, um, the property could not support the debt service on those bonds. There is now currently foreclosure actions going on, uh, in the county courts by those bondholders. But as Mr. Buck alluded to, um, those bondholders have been working over the last several years to work on a settlement with the city, uh, with Mr. Buck's team, um, to settle that debt, uh, to allow for the development of the site.
To your, uh, to use your term, Mr. Segura, is anybody on Mr. Buck's team currently part of that private debt group?
No, we are solely working as the developer.
Okay. Mr. Zimmerman, you stated that, uh, you believe, that's the term you used, that there's a high likelihood Cabela's will leave. Did I state that correctly?
I did say that. Yes, sir.
All right. I want to know, now you also said, if my notes are correct, that Cabela's won't talk to you. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So I want to know, once you base your opinion that there's a high likelihood that Cabela's will leave.
Um, I think that's a great question. Thank you very much. Um, and while we, while we regularly reach out to the real estate contacts down in Springfield, Missouri, um, it is their policy that they will, they, that they will not discuss what their real estate, uh, plans are with, with really any company or, excuse me, with any city, uh, which is a common business practice. Um, um, but we continue to reach out to them. Um, but my opinion, which is based on over 30 years of city management experience and over 20 years of economic development experience, is that, is that it is that most retail stores, and certainly while a Cabela's is a destination-oriented, uh, type of, type of retail use, they like to be in close proximity to other similar retail uses. They also like to be where there's higher traffic counts. We know that, that, uh, uh, um, the other one that bought them, um,
Bass Pro Shops.
Thank you. Bass Pro Shops. We know that they have a store over in St. Char- in the city of St. Charles, in St. Charles County. And while it is our considered opinion that that store is too small for them to grow, and we hear through some of our contacts in the real estate industry, that it's probably too, too small for it to grow, we do think it's likely that they're going to want to go to something with a higher traffic corridor like 70, a higher, uh, 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 retail s- space. And, and to do that, you're probably going to have to be somewhere, uh, more on the outer fringes. We believe, however, that if, if, um, we can draw traffic back to the site, like when it was a fully operating mall bringing in many hundreds of millions of dollars, we think that they might be likely to stay.
So at the end of the day, what you've just stated is basically surmise and speculation. You have no facts to support your belief that Cabela's is highly likely to leave. Do you?
Only by years of experience.
Right. So basically, it's your opinion?
I believe that I made it clear that that was my opinion. Yes.
Okay. Now, did you also say, Mr. Zimmerman, that, um, Hazelwood has the lead on this project? If I get that right?
What, what we have agreed to do is that, uh, because there is a number of governmental agencies that would be participating in this, is that we would be the point person or we would be the lead agency because, um, most public-private property, uh, public-private partnerships, somewhat, the government likes to know who they are working with. They like to know where their money is going. And we are, we are certainly prepared as this is a project in our community, we are most familiar with the project and the landscape, that we are willing to serve as, as the agency that makes sure that all of the money is properly collected and properly dispersed. In addition, the development agreement, uh, that we had, um, both two separate agreements, one with the county, one with Big Sports Properties, uh, basically said that all money that, that would go into a pool, and this is a gross oversimplification, now I'd ask Mark Spikerman to, to more fully real, uh, describe the details if you're interested in them. But in essence, the pool of money that would go towards this project, every expense that goes out of it has to be signed off by the city to make sure that it is, one, a proper expense, and two, that it's go- that that money is going for a certain specific purpose. As was stated earlier today, for example, this money that would be coming in from the county's hotel tax must go for a public purpose. Um, in this case, the public ballfields. The city would make sure, the city would sign off that, that, that here's the expenses, here's the bills, um, that were incurred by Big Sports Properties. They went for this purpose and that they were authorized before that money will be doled back out to the developer.
So do my notes, are, are they also correct, sir? Did, did I understand you correctly that, um, you're not prepared to take that lead role until all financing is, uh, approved?
Not, not only is that the city's position, but it is a promise that we have made to, to the county, to the CVC, um, as well. And, and we always keep our promises.
And as you sit here today, that financing has not been approved. Is that correct?
That is correct. Now, all funding is in place. That's one of the reasons why we're asking for this, this commitment, if you will, this encumbran- encumbrment of that $6 million so that we can start to kid, to, to sort of reconstruct the pieces again. We're, we're just, very similarly, we are working directly with the TDD bondholders to, to not only make sure we, we, we have access to all of the land, acquire all, or they can acquire all the land, but what the TDD settlement will be. We are intimately involved in those conversations.
So if I understood your statement correctly, you're basically looking to use this $6 million from taxpayers' fund to bootstrap and furnish your image to, uh, um, traditional lenders to complete your financing?
That is not how I described what I said.
That's how it sounded to me.
I, I don't believe we are bootstrapping anything. I believe we are working on a public-private partnership in which, um, everybody wants to see, and everyone's made clear that they expect to see everybody's money at the table or no money comes to the table. We recognize that that's the only viable way to make this deal happen. And quite frankly, it's the only, uh, politically correct way. And I don't mean that in, in a, in a, in a, in a generic sense. I mean that in a sense of, of, um, we understand that, that this is how this has to, to work in order to protect the interests of the taxpayers.
Did your, did Hazelwood pay for the, uh, economic impact study that Mr. Buck referred to?
We did.
Okay. I request that you provide the council with copies of that.
Will be happy to do so.
Okay. Um, Mr. Buck, well, before I get to Mr. Buck, Mr. Zimmerman, um, is it your position that, um, because of COVID-19 and related problems we've all experienced, that the lending market was severely impacted negatively as a result of the pandemic?
I, I'm sorry. Was that, I, I apologize. I was trying to shut off my phone. Was that directed to me or to Mr. Buck? I, I missed that.
It was directed to you, Mr. Zimmerman. My notes reflect that you stated that the lending market was negatively impacted as a result of COVID.
Uh, yes, that, that has been our experience. Um, our economic development, uh, activities in 2020 were considerably less in, in multiple different possible environments. Um, and we believe that that is a direct result. We know from our studies, from reading newspaper articles, from talking to people in the industry, that there has been a, a, a low interest in, um, um, lending in calendar year 2020 in the, in the development markets.
Fair to say that at least, uh, part of that reason, if not the majority of it, is because of the negative impact on retail sales and, and in particular for our discussion, the hospitality industry?
Um, in my opinion, I believe that, 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 that is one of the markets that have been affected. What I can tell you from our conversations with people in this field is that all industries were negatively impacted, um, as a result, in terms of the, of the debt market, um, for economic development.
But you, you agree or disagree that the hospitality industry, perhaps in particular, certainly in St. Louis County, has been severely impacted negatively as a result of COVID?
That is what the CVC has reported to us. Yes.
All right. Mr. Buck, same question to you, sir. Do you believe that COVID has negatively impacted the, uh, lending market?
There's not, not a doubt in my mind that, uh, you know, banks are, are either A, overextended on PPP loans. The smaller banks, the larger banks are being much more cautious, being much more traditional in their lending. Uh, special use projects such as ours has been more of a struggle, um, especially when they see that hotels, restaurants, retail is still a driving force of our, uh, business model. However, I, I will say this, they do recognize that, um, across the state of Missouri, across other states, uh, that are open for business, the youth sports industry is booming already. Uh, they recognize that it is a sector of the tourism market that will probably come back well ahead of theme parks, well ahead of, uh, air travel, well ahead of resorts and, and, um, uh, international destinations. Uh, families are very comfortable, clearly, um, simply because we see tournaments that are filled all over the Midwest, uh, right now. This, this past weekend, St. Louis City had almost 750 teams playing at the convention center. Um, teams from across the United States were in St. Louis City, uh, playing a huge tournament. Last week, there were 300 boys teams down at the convention center. Uh, if, if a tournament venue is open, whether Cape Girardeau, Jeff City, Kansas City, uh, St. Charles County, if they're open for business, they are packed. Um, so we, we're very confident that this industry will be an economic leader and coming out of COVID and, and getting our venue full will not be a problem once we're open for business.
And your opinion was the hotel and motel industry severely packed it and impacted negatively in 2020 as a result of the COVID pandemic?
Councilman Tracus, you, you probably can answer that question better than I. If you look at your tax rolls, um, I think, um, airport hotels are reporting, you know, a 60, 70% reduction in most of those, um, larger hotels. Westport has seen a, a significant decline. I don't think there's really any hotel, uh, in the country that has not been significantly devastated because of the loss of business travel during the week and, and because in, in our case, no sports travel going on. Uh, sports travel has always been a very big funder and supporter of, uh, weekend traffic for hotels. And, uh, without those tournaments going on, we certainly in St. Louis County are losing significant business. And to answer your question directly, absolutely, the hotels are suffering greatly in St. Louis County.
Your opinion, fair to say that, um, that, um, reduction in revenue with respect to motels and hotels specifically will likely continue at least through the first half of 2021?
Um, I would think there could still be a, a lag, certainly in the business industry. I think, um, we're, we're hearing good signs that, uh, youth sports tournament bans could be lifted shortly. We're going to certainly do everything we can, as well as other, uh, sports venues, um, are eager to get back to work and getting tournaments coming. So we should be able to pick up our weekend traffic, um, in St. Louis County if sports tournaments can again resume. Um, I would say the business sector of, uh, the hotels, you know, is going to be a lagger for sure.
Okay. And, um, I'd like to request a copy, um, I'm using my understanding of what you testified or spoke to earlier, that you will make a, available to us if requested, a detailed pro forma that your company's put together on this?
Sure.
I, I'd like to have a copy of that, please, as well as any other council member who wants it. And, um, final question, uh, Mr. Buck, can you share with us, um, prior experience and history of success that Big Sports Properties has had with projects elsewhere?
We're a St. Louis-based company. We were only a consulting firm for probably two and a half, three years. We have never owned and operated our own facility. Um, this is, uh, an industry that is primarily run by municipalities and park districts. So most sports venues in the U.S. do not have private, uh, companies operating and, and, and functioning those. So, uh, we just see that the sector of the economy is continuing to grow and does create business opportunities. There's very few companies in the country who do what we do or who has done the research that we have done. Um, most of them are just tournament operators. We have a, a very, um, experienced team of folks who've been in the tournament industry and in the sports facility operations. Our management team has over 50 years of experience in those sectors.
So no prior experience actually operating one of these, uh, proj- projects or complexes prior to this one? Is that right?
Yeah, no, right. No, no public enti- no, no private entity in the United States has the experience of running outside of Disney World, um, a venue of this size or scope. I mean, like I said, most of the venues you're talking about are run by park districts.
Thank you. That's all I have for now.
That's great.
Thank you. Any further questions from any of the council members? Any further questions or comments? We will move to public comments. Diane, I believe you said that we had a public comment?
Yes, Madam Chair. Comment comes from Tom Sullivan, 63130. I do not think the $6 million from the Convention and Recreation Trust Fund should go for the ballfield fund. The funds should instead be spent for more pressing needs in St. Louis County. The $6 million could be used to open senior se- centers in North County that were closed. It could be used to provide incentives to attract grocery stores to areas of the county where they are needed. It could be used to attract retail businesses to central business areas that have been having difficulties, especially with the pandemic. A lack of neighborhood grocery stores and retail shopping causes property values to decline along with property tax revenue and also causes the quality of life to decline for many residents. The mall has now been neglected for more than 10 years. The $6 million could go toward helping to eliminate this lost time eyesore. Nearby residents have complained of high weeds, rats, and even snakes. There is a problem in St. Louis County with student homelessness, an issue that is often ignored. One more area that should have a greater priority. The St. Louis County Land Clearance Authority can't even get trash cleaned off the hundreds of properties it owns. Years ago, Buzz was, bez, excuse me, Buzz West- Years ago, Buzz West, Buzz, excuse me, Buzz Westfall said, quote, "We are starting to see problems associated with older neighborhoods. Disinvestment, abandonment of buildings, vacant strip malls, and dying downtowns aren't just a city of St. Louis problem, they are a St. Louis County problem as well. If we sit idly by, we may inherit a similar fate," end quote. But the county did sit idly by while spending tens of millions of dollars for questionable purposes, resulting in people, jobs, and revenue leaving the county in record numbers. As state lawmakers, as state law makes clear, any funds in the Convention and Recreation Trust Fund beyond what is needed for the downtown dome can be spent for general revenue purposes. The contention to the contrary by the Convention and Visitors Commission is false. The opinion they provide from their own law firm is about as credible as an opinion from the county councilor. I urge you to reject approval of the $6 million for the Ball Fields Fund. Thank you for listening to my comments. That's all, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. This is a question to Genevieve. Uh, do we, this is on the final passage, I believe, uh, calendar, is that correct?
Um, I would have to look just a moment.
I think Diane is shaking her head yes. Um, and so at this particular point, do we need a recommendation from this council to move forward? What is the appropriate uh process at this point?
You can make a recommendation. If someone wishes to make a recommendation, make a motion for a recommendation from this committee. You, the committee certainly can take that out, but a recommendation would not be necessary for the bill to be considered for final passage.
Okay. Uh, Councilman Trakus?
Thank you, um, I I do think at this point, uh, a statement is appropriate. Um, based on what we heard today, moving on final passage of this matter this evening is woefully premature. Mr. Buck and Mr. Zimmerman have both conceded that the very source of the monies that are they're asking for, that is, the hotel motel tax, has been severely impacted due to COVID, both throughout '20 and well into '21, perhaps the entire year. So that begs the question, um, will the hotel motel tax generate enough funds to cover this and other obligations that we've already committed with respect to the Convention and Visitors Bureau, resulting in the possibility, if not the likelihood, that these funds may have to come out of the general fund if we commit them? So I think at this point, as I said, it's premature to um move forward with final passage. I think this committee of the whole needs to hear from Mr. Kreidler, the um county's budget director, to determine what uh impact the revenue from hotel and motels has declined with respect to the taxes that we're proposing to use for this. Um, so I I would recommend um to this council, and I'll do the same this evening, that this matter be held and we not move forward with the final passage until we had a minimum here from Mr. Kreidler with respect to where we are on this hotel and motel tax and where we can expect to be in '21. Because the last thing I think anybody on this council um anticipates is using general funds monies which are already pressed for uh an obligation that we arguably don't even have anymore. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Councilman Harder?
Yes, um, I'd like to ask a question of Chris Howard concerning the budget. Uh, I would like to know if you know the uh balance in the CVC fund in our in our bu- budget right now?
Uh, I do not, I'd have to give me a minute and I can look it up.
Okay, if you would. I believe at the end of last, it's about $20 million in there, uh of which this $6 million was earmarked for this project. Uh, but I could be mistaken if you could check on that while we're talking. Uh, secondly, this money is supposed to be used for tourism and things that help tourism. We've used this money for the Magic House, we've used this money for other things. It is a restricted fund um for this use, so it can only be used for these type of things. So I would like to mention that. Also, the um the the Convention and Visitors Bureau has not committed to anything for use downtown. Uh, they are on hold uh for their commitment to remodeling the convention center, from my understanding. So they will not be spending the money we committed down there as we previously previously earmarked for them as well a year or so ago. So everything's kind of on hold with them uh until this segment of the marketplace comes back. And St. Louis has been uh deeply hurt by this COVID situation when it comes to hotels, motels, restaurants, and tourism. I think they are, as an industry, in my opinion, and from what I've read, is they are reassessing whether even conventions will be coming back uh even after pandemics. So uh companies are reassessing that whole issue and whether that will even be necessary to remodel the convention center if that whole segment of the marketplace even comes back. Um, companies have figured out that they don't need to use conventions uh to bring people together. They can do it on Zoom, they can do it by other means uh than having hotel rooms and airlines and other things being done. So I think we're going to see a full flip-flop of our our tourism industry across the country, from what I've read, uh, when it comes to this, and it will take a long time for them to dig out for that type of uh what we consider traditional tourism um venues. So this is untraditional and what looks like to be the next uh boom that will help that whole industry pull ahead and to start uh renting hotel rooms again in the St. Louis area. And I've talked to many hoteliers in the Westport area and in the airport area, and they are very much behind this. They see it, they see it as a draw, and uh and it could be a boom for North County when it comes to that. Um, so it's been that way since the beginning, and I would encourage this board to support this new measure of set aside. Again, if this project doesn't happen for some reason, this money has not been spent. It's been set aside since 2019 for this purpose, and uh not a penny has been spent out of this until this project comes together. Thank you.
Uh, that being said, um, and we don't necessarily have to have a recommendation, but I think it would be appropriate uh for us to do that. Uh, I would like to have a motion uh that we, whatever the recommendation is uh for this project. Anyone?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Days.
Yeah, just a second, Councilman Harder was speaking.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion that we refer this to the full council for a vote and to approve this uh funding mechanism.
Is there a second?
Um, discussion, please.
Is there a second first?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion, Councilwoman Clancy, you recognized.
Yes, I um, whose district is this in?
Dunaway's.
Okay, I I think that there are some very important voices missing from this committee discussion today. One, Councilwoman Dunaway's, who um is not able to make it today, and I I I'm not sure if who all was aware of that, but that is um, we need to hear from her about this. And then I am, I am surprised that we're talking about such a significant amount of money, and we don't have Paul Kreidler here, as Councilman Trakus pointed out. And additionally, we don't have any analysis from the council's own budget policy coordinator. So I cannot move forward on on taking a vote on this without those those missing pieces of the conversation being here to fill in some pretty glaring gaps.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, if I may.
Yes, Councilman Trakus, you recognized.
Thank you. I want to emphasize again that this is a big financial risk in light of the current strains on the economy that we're experiencing, particularly with respect to the revenue that's was anticipated to be generated through hotel and motel tax that has now, for all intents and purposes, disappeared. So until we hear from Mr. Kreidler with hard numbers, as I said, I think it's premature to move forward on this. Secondly, I think given the uh what amounts to essentially speculation with respect to the viability of this type of uh project, it wouldn't hurt this council to hear from the uh um Economic Development uh Board with respect to uh um their take on this type of endeavor, whether or not they're prepared to fund some of it, et cetera. So I think that at a minimum, another hearing is appropriate, certainly one in which the council member whose district this will be in will be allowed to be here and um question as well as um opine as to what she believes is right for her district. So I agree with Councilwoman Clancy on that, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Chris, did you get any information?
Uh, Madam Chair, I'm still trying to pull that all I can uh pull up in short order is just how much we've paid into that this year. Uh, I'm going to need more time to pull together an appropriate uh answer, uh both on their fund balance and um talk to Paul about any projections regarding um, you know, the the impact from uh revenues.
Thank you very much, well, you have until about 5 o'clock to get that done.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Madam, this is the Councilman Days.
Councilman Trakus?
Thank you, yes, with all due respect to Mr. Howard, um, I'd like to hear from Mr. Kreidler directly. I don't want to hear it through another party, I want to hear his opinion directly from him.
Thank you very much. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. We have had a motion and a second to recommend this to the full council. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, those opposed, no?
No.
Chris and Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Nay.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember?
I think she's having audio problem.
Oh. It says you're on mute.
Who are you trying to reach?
Councilmember?
Member Webb, I believe.
Yeah, her.
She's just pumped off.
She's having inter neck issues.
Okay. Carry on.
Uh, Councilmember Trakus?
No.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
I think my way of back, I'm not sure if she's audio.
Councilmember Webb? You're on mute.
Madam Chair, can you hear my voice?
Oh, yes.
Okay, so I'm having technical difficulties. Um, everything's gone blank, but I'm glad that you can hear my voice. Before I cast my vote, I do want to make a statement. There is an opportunity for um development in North County, and this will be very impactful. I heard my uh peers as they share concern about making sure that North County was considered in development and in Jamestown Mall, and I thank them for that concern. Unfortunately, Jamestown Mall is in a different predicament because it's owned by the Port Authority, and we're still getting more information about that. As for this entity being viable, as a mother of sons that was in AAU sports and selected baseball, select baseball, I understand the the huge draw that it brings uh for cities across the nation. I would love to see St. Louis, specifically North, pay any a part of this. I do seek reverence and get more information as Councilman Trakus uh alluded to, so we can make sure we're clear on those numbers. At this time, I would like to make my vote that we um that we wait until we get feedback, so my vote at this time will be a no.
Madam Chair, on the motion to refer to the full council for funding of this project, there are three ayes and three noes.
Councilwoman Days, I believe the motion was to recommend to the full council final passage?
It was to recommend, and and you said that because?
Because because uh the clerk said that the motion was to refer to the to the council, and I believe the motion was to recommend.
Recommend to the full council for funding of this project?
Yes.
Thank you. So on the motion to recommend to the full council for funding of this project, there are three ayes and three noes.
Three ayes and three noes, that means that the motion fails. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Harder?
Yes, Madam Chair, I would recommend that uh we talk to Paul Kreidler and to Dan Buck and to Matt Zimmerman, and any information that uh Councilman Trakus and Councilman Clancy recommended and requested that they uh be delivered to them as soon as possible so that they can review and that we can take this matter up soon.
Thank you very much, um, Councilman Harder, and I did believe, I think, uh, I said to uh Chris, uh, you have a 5 o'clock deadline for that?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you very much. Any other discussion, any other business to come before the count, but um at this time?
Councilwoman Days, uh, I I appreciate Chris working expeditiously to get that by 5:00 P.M. I will need to hear from Paul Kreidler as well. Um, I will not have time today, it is a snow day. I am at home with my four-year-old, managing a lot of spinning plates, so I'm going to need a little bit more time than today in order to make a fully informed decision on this.
Thank you, perhaps you can call him. A motion to adjourn, please?
It's moved.
Uh, uh, second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Motion, motion to adjourn, it's approved. See you later on this evening, thank you.